The meeting is called to order. Natalie, may we have the roll call, please?
Chairperson Phil Goldstein.
Here.
Chairperson Marty Jost.
Here.
Commissioner Lisa Barden.
Here.
Commissioner Eric Westlin.
Commissioner Tom Wood.
Here.
Alternate Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Alternate Wendy Newland.
Here.
Commissioners, any amendments to the agenda? Staff? Great. Determination of alternate voting, Eric Westlin is not here. We'll have Wendy vote tonight here, our first official meeting. Public comment. Anybody signed up for general public comment, which is an opportunity to speak on something not on the agenda? As I thought, okay, we will close the general public comment. Consent agenda consists of, only of approval of the April 19th, 2022 meeting minutes. Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post consent agenda, item number five is approved. Business, item six A. Resolution for annexation for property known as Drail, am I pronouncing that correctly? Drailly, thank you, to the town of Timneth. Chad?
Thank you, chairperson. If it's all right with the commission, I was gonna do my presentation of all four items, since they do relate to that Drailly property. The applicant has also done her presentation in that same format, if that's okay with you, and then we can do the, if we have any questions about specific applications or items, we can do that at the end, or you can interrupt me if you'd like.
That'll be fine. Nobody has any objections to that, okay? We can always circle back to anything as well. Okay, very good, thank you.
No problem. So, we'll start with item six A, the Drailly annexation application. This is a resolution approving the annexation proposal for the property referred to as Drailly Farm. The property is actually still owned by the Drailly Trust, so I apologize, that is a typo there. But the applicant is Hartford Homes and is represented by Savannah Benedict Welch from Norris Design. The petition was brought forth to Town Council for substantial compliance on April 26th, 2022. Following their approval, noticing for today's public hearing was published for four consecutive weeks in the Colorado. On top of that, we also did additional noticing to residents within those 500 feet of the property per standard code. So the subject property is outlined in blue, located at the northwest corner of Three Bell Parkway and River Pass Road. Three quarters of that property boundary is immediately adjacent to the town, meeting the one-six contingency required for annexation. This annexation will consist, as you see there, of two parcels of land totaling in roughly 33 acres, which includes the right-of-way of Three Bell Parkway and River Pass Road. The property is currently located in uncorporated Laramie County and falls within the town's growth management area. As you see here, with the highlighted area there, or hatched area, showing the contingency to the town itself, allowing that to be eligible for annexation. They are designated as low-density residential in the comprehensive plan. The applicant is proposing single-family residential dwellings, which is an allowable use within that designation. This property will go through future plating and site plan processes as they develop, and the annexation has been reviewed against state statute and the Timneth Land Use Code. So with the annexation comes zoning. The applicant is requesting to amend the town zoning map for this property to R2, single-family residential. Conforming to that comprehensive plan designation, the zoning district allows for the maximum of density of four dwelling units per acre and is compatible to adjacent users based on the zoning map adjacency here. The next application is the sketch plan application for a future land division of the Drailly property. This conceptual document is the first step within the major subdivision process outlining the potential configuration of the development as well as its proposed density. As you can see here, the initial points of access proposed in the sketch plan come from the north, from the trailside, or formerly known as rendezvous subdivision. There is a constructed road there, platted within the second filing, so it'd be a continuation of that, and an additional access point from the south, from River Road to the south. Additionally, the sketch plan does include the potential for additional access points to the west if that land were to develop in the future. This application is proposing 111 single-family detached lots, conforming to the maximum density allowed within the R2 zoning district. The density per gross area would be 3.3 dwelling units per acre. This application also includes predetermined open space locations, a neighborhood park, and provides a continuation of the Pooter River Trail from the north. This plan meets the parks and open space requirements for a single-family detached residential development. There was a neighborhood meeting requirement for this application. That meeting was held on April 28th here at the town hall. The purpose for the meeting was to gather feedback and/or concerns from surrounding residents on the sketch plan. There were four individuals in attendance, and their comments were included in the observation report and your staff report. This application was reviewed against the sketch plan review criteria and the Timneth Land Use Code, and we find it in conformance with that criteria. Therefore, we would be recommending approval for that sketch plan tonight. Finally, we have the plan development overlay application for this property. This application is to make modifications to dimensional standards in the land use code for that R2, single-family residential zoning district. The intent of the overlay is to provide more flexibility to create a walkable compact product type that would be compatible with the trailside development to the north. Changes to the PD overlay are for the entire property. Generally, the overlay is asking for relief, as you see here on this document, for lot sizes and setbacks. To highlight a few of those. So with this overlay, it is going to create both front-loaded and rear-loaded lots for properties. So some of the changes to a front-loaded would include reducing the lot size from 6,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet. Reducing the lot width from 54 feet to 45 feet, and reduce the front yard garage setback from 22 to 20. For lots that are rear-loaded, that would be a reduction from 6,000 square feet to 2,400 square feet. Reducing the lot width from 54 feet to 30 feet, lot frontage from 35 feet to 30, and the front yard setback from 15 feet to nine, if that property is fronting open space. All property, the entire property will have the change for an easement reduction from 14 to 12. Increase the maximum purview slot coverage from 60 to 80, and reduce the side yard setback from seven to five. And this just shows a document of what potentially, how those lots could lay out, showing those different dimensional standards on different areas and different lot types within that development. The application was reviewed against land use code, and staff is recommending approval of the PD overlay. And with that, I will turn it to Savannah for her presentation.
Say Kevin, Wendy and my screens are not on, I'm wondering if.
Mine's on.
Oh, you got it?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Can y'all hear me all right? All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Savannah Benedict Welch, planner with Norris Design, representing the applicant team this evening. I am joined this evening by Wendy Cudmore, who is with Hartford Homes, the developer for this proposed Drailly development, and also Brian McBreen with Norris Design as well. So Chad did a great job of introducing the location of this property, but I'll just kind of briefly mention the location, just to continue the conversation. So this property, as mentioned, is at the northwest corner of Three Bell Parkway and River Pass Road, directly south of the trailside development. The property is roughly 33.34 acres, and is currently contains single family on the property. It contains a couple of farmhouses, as well as some outbuildings and a barn that I will discuss later on in this presentation. So this proposal includes four applications, as Chad mentioned. The first being the proposed annexation for the site into the town of Timneth. Currently, the site is surrounded on three sides by the town of Timneth, as shown in this image. The proposed zoning with our annexation is R2, single-family residential, which allows for detached residential, single-family units. It also conforms with the Timneth comprehensive plan, as Chad mentioned, allowing up to four dwelling units per acre. The second application is the Drailly plan development overlay. And as Chad mentioned, the plan development overlay is intended to allow the underlying zoning. So basically, the intent of this is really to allow for smaller home lot sizes, in turn allowing for more open space, walkability, and compact development. It will still allow for a single-family detached residential, so the underlying zoning still applies as far as the uses. It does not permit single-family attached. We also wanted to point out, as shown by this image here, that it will be a very similar look and feel to the trailside development directly to the north. So we wanted to provide an overlay of the Drailly neighborhood next to the trailside development directly to the north, which was a Hartford proposal as well. And as you can see, it will be accessed from the trailside development to the north. It will certainly be an extension of that development with a little bit lower density feel to it. All detached residential units associated with this development. And we felt that that's a great kind of transition from the higher density to the north, to the lower density to the east and south. This is kind of in the middle, 3.3 units per acre, a little bit under the allowed density of four units per acre. So it really creates this natural progression, progression of density from the north. And also included with this application is the sketch plan, which is the first phase of the development process. Basically, it's as a conceptual plan showing the general road locations. As Chad mentioned, the connection from the trailside development to the north, as well as a connection to River Pass Road to the south. It also shows conceptually the location of the park central to the site, as well as the location of detention and utilities throughout the development as well. We also wanted to share the conceptual plan for the proposed development. This just provides a little bit more of a colored rendering of the proposed development. As you can see by the information on this plan, we are proposing a total of 111 units. That would be the max allowed, based on the sanitation district limitations. And also a 4.8 acre park central to the site. And that certainly goes above and beyond the requirements for open space. It provides a wonderful amenity for the neighborhood. There's also a preserved barn on the property that I'll discuss more in the next slide. As far as the proposed lot types, as shown in the PD overlay, there's a mix As far as the proposed lot types, as shown in the PD overlay, there's a mix of different lot types, but generally speaking, there is primarily front-loaded, single-family detached home sites and alley-loaded, single-family detached home sites. Generally speaking, the front-loaded will have a width of 55 feet by 109 feet in depth, generally around 6,000 square feet. Some of them might be a little bit less than that depending on the location. And then also around 27 alley-loaded homes, that's the darker shaded lots generally in the northeast portion of the site. And those will generally be around 40 feet in width by 95 feet in depth, around 3,800 square feet somewhere in that range. So that's kind of a general understanding of what we're proposing with this development. We certainly are proposing future extensions to the west, as Chad mentioned. If there is development to the west, there will be an opportunity to provide access to that development as well. We also wanted to take a moment to share some project highlights and some unique qualities of this development. This beautiful photo here shows the Drayly barn that will be preserved on site. So the intent is to keep this barn, and it will help to drive the overall design aesthetic of the planned park. We have landscape architects that are currently starting to work on the design of this park, and we feel that this will be an inspiring kind of amenity of the park. Uses of the barn are still to be determined pending structural analysis of the barn, but we do feel that it's a great tribute to the history of this property. Also on this property is the enhanced park, excuse me, park, as mentioned, with open space and trails throughout the development. The proposed unit count, as mentioned, is under the allowed density, providing an opportunity for more open area and a large 4.8 acre park, which provides a great amenity and enhanced feature for the development. Also incorporated with our proposal is an enhanced building architectural character. This, the proposed neighborhood will include a variety of residential home designs that will continue the trailside aesthetic to the north, so will have a very similar feel to the trailside development with a mix of designs. And on a similar note, this is just a snapshot of the proposed architectural character of the development. As mentioned, it will have a very similar feel to the trailside development, and home designs will vary in curb appeal and street front design and will certainly have varying degrees of design throughout the development to give each home its own unique style. And that is all we have for this evening. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask any questions you have.
I know all these, thank you, Savannah. I'm sure we will. I know all these are open for public comment. We have obviously nobody here, so may I open public comment on all four and then close public comment? Okay. All right. So we're going to open the public comment on item 6A, resolution for annexation, and then we'll close public comment. We're opening public comment on item 6B, the zoning map amendment for annexation and closing public comment. Item 6C, the sketch plan, we open public comment and close public comment. And lastly, item 6D, the PD Land Development Overlay Amendment, we open and close public comment. So with that, I'll bring it up here to the commissioners, questions for Savannah and team.
I guess since we're doing them all at once, we can have questions about any of them.
Yes.
Okay. So the question I have is, I know that we're allowed a certain number per acre, but is there any concern with lot sizes of sub 3,000 square feet on a detached home decreasing from the standard of 6,000 all the way down to 2,400 or 2,500?
Yeah. With that, because of the trailside adjacent to it to the north, staff was comfortable allowing for some of those lots to have a decrease within that square footage as it would be more of a cohesive transition as opposed to if it were directly next to some of our larger, more standard, single-family detached developments.
So I mean, I guess you got, you got both sides of that, right? Because you have across the street, you've got, you know, three quarters of an acre to an acre lot, but right next to you, you have the same. So even though you've got both aspects of it, you're okay with that because of the touching on trailside?
Correct. And we think that having the increased open space with that plan development will improve and be beneficial to that development. Without that increase there, I don't think that staff would be comfortable, as comfortable with the decrease of those lot sizes.
Anything else, Jeremy?
No.
Okay. That's a good, that's a fair question. Commissioners, Wendy?
Go ahead.
I have a question about the barn. Who's responsible for the upkeep? Is that part of the HOA?
Yeah, so that would be part of that Metro District HOA for the development. Anything, I believe Savannah may be able to speak on that. Sorry, I thought you...
Yeah, no, you're fine.
But yeah, that would be part of the agreement is that the parks and landscaping, everything would be held by the HOA or Metro District of the area.
Is the barn, I'll just jump everywhere. Is the barn, Savannah, it'll be usable by the residents in some fashion?
That's to be determined. It really depends on, you know, the structural integrity and Wendy can speak more to the barn. I know you're in the process of working towards that. Yeah, yeah. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Wendy Cudmore with Hartford Homes, and we have arranged to work with a consultant to do a structural engineering review of that facility. We've been in it ourselves, but the safety of the community and those in the area is of great importance to us, so we're having it reviewed by a structural engineer. We should have that information in three to four weeks.
All right. So you can, you can answer that question next time this comes around.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think you saw a photo of the barn. It has such beautiful aesthetic component to the structure, and I just envision community members taking Christmas photos out there. That was one thing that looked really fun, but we are exploring options. I know our owner, Landon, has asked us to see to what extent could we utilize the facility.
Okay, thank you.
So we're checking into it.
All right. Tom, sorry, I hope I didn't hit you off the pass there. I wanted to stay on the barn for a moment.
A couple of questions. I noticed in the stormwater design, you used a 10-year flood characteristic and a maximum of 10 CFS. Do you think that's conservative enough in your analysis, or is that on the edge?
Oh, that's, that's still in review. Our civil engineer is taking a look at that, and that will be reviewed in more detail during the preliminary plat phase. But currently, that's, staff has taken a look at it, and, you know, our civil has taken a look at it, and currently, yes, we find it to be in conformance. But that's certainly still under review as we continue the engineering...
And did that take into account the impervious space for the park as well as the developed areas?
I believe it does, but we'll, we can, we'll certainly look into that closer as we continue.
I do think that, you know, with changes in weather and so forth that we've seen coming up, that we're likely to see more extreme weather events, and I think that a more conservative approach might be warranted, particularly in this area based on the densities.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, as you said, there's, you know, a lot of open space proposed throughout this development, which certainly will help with that. There is a detention area proposed on the southeast area of the site, and our engineer has determined that that will be enough for, you know, to capture those flows.
Also, with respect to the earlier question, you know, it certainly is in keeping with the trailside developments, but it's not really in keeping with those developments to the, to the east or south of the property where they are, you know, quite a bit larger. I'm wondering, you know, what's your justification on the, on the reduction in side-to-side setbacks from seven to five? I do think that's a bit extreme.
Yeah, and our, our thought process was, as Chad mentioned, to keep with a similar character to the trailside development to the north, which does have, many of these dimensions that we're proposing are in alignment with the trailside development to the north, with the understanding that we are, you know, reducing the density drastically. The, the overall density is, is actually much less than what's allowed with the four dwelling units per acre. We are proposing 3.3. And so the, the idea with creating, you know, smaller lot sizes, smaller dimensions is really to capture more public open space, you know, a more walkable, more, just more compact development with the understanding that overall, we are meeting, you know, we're actually quite a bit under the allowed density.
I think with respect, because this is an R2, not an R3 zoning, that we should seriously consider maintaining that seven-foot side setback because I think it really is important, particularly when you have these, these rear-loaded lots. If you do that, I can see where, you know, rather than 2,400 square foot a lot, it's closer to 3,000 square foot a lot. You can still have the number of houses. You may see a reduction of maybe four houses in the, in the lot size if you made that, that change, which shouldn't really affect the economics of the, of the development. So I seriously like staff to consider whether or not reducing that from seven to five really makes sense and is justified because of issues like stormwater, issues like fires that we've had here in Colorado. I think we should be more conservative in some of those spaces.
So Tom, the land use code does have a provision that lots that do back to open space automatically qualify for a reduction from seven to five feet. The land use code already sets that up, so this, this request in the PD overlay is just kind of reiterating that. So it is still an allowable thing that they can do without the request of the PD overlay.
So it's something they can do, but the question is, should they?
It's an allowable thing that, by the land use code, that they have the ability to do, as long as they have lots that open, the lots that open to back and back, open, back to open space, they have the ability to reduce the side yard setback from seven to five. That was an incentive part of the land use code update a couple of years ago, because that's what council wanted to have was more of the open space behind lots instead of lots backing to each other. So we put that incentive into the land use code.
So we could, we could voice an opinion.
Correct.
But they are within the guidelines there, it really is. They are not in any way, shape, or form overstepping those bounds.
Yeah, we have multiple other subdivisions in town that just by the nature of the lots backing to open space, have the ability to reduce the side yard setback from seven feet to five.
Yeah, just thinking of that, there's, I was trying to think of a subdivision that didn't, you know, that we haven't approved.
The, the only one, really the only neighborhoods that don't have that are some of the older ones. You know, the original Timneth Ranch, Timneth South, but Kitchell, for example, is one that has the five-foot side yards. Wildwing, Wildwing does, Timneth Landing does. So a lot of the subdivisions do have that reduction.
My, my question would be, and I guess just without having the picture here, backing to open space, will that always be open space? Because I know they're mentioned, you know, to the west, right? I don't know if any of those properties that are going down to that five-foot mark are potential of having something built back there and not being open space. Does that make sense?
Yep. So that, those lots that are over there still technically meet opens or back into open space. If you kind of look on the southwest there, Jeremy, there's an arrow that kind of directionally goes up to the northwest. That would be a road extension that comes up. So those lots would still ultimately back to some type of open space.
Got it.
In the future, just by the way of the, the road network, but since that property is still in the county, we don't have right now any say or vision for what that property to the west would be, so it would still be an allowable reduction since it does back to open space.
The alleyway lots, about half of them back to open space, but some of them don't.
Those, those ones, the ones that do back to open space and not, so there are a few of those that don't back to open space, but that is why they're requesting the overall for the PD overlay, that request on the alley-loaded lots, especially on the alley-loaded lots being smaller. Staff finds that having that reduction is still applicable because it is a mirror of the trailside development to the north. But as you mentioned, all the other lots that are over there, single-family detached, and then half of those are the alley-loaded, would still be eligible for that standard code requirement.
Understood. Well, you know, my opinion.
Yep.
I have one other question. In the public meeting, there was a number of questions asked, but I didn't see any answers to those questions. Were the questions answered and were those, those answers published?
Are you referring to the neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, at the neighborhood meeting, there's a number of questions asked by one of the residents, and I saw a list of the questions, but I didn't see any answers.
Yeah, and there were certainly answers to them. I think it was more of just a description of the questions, and we can certainly add the answers to those as well.
I think that would be valuable because he had some good questions, and I was curious to know what was the answer.
What was the?
Was there one specifically?
Yeah. Can we read?
He has questions about the height.
Can we see the question and know what the answer was?
Of the, of the new houses. He was worried about view. He asked questions about dimensions, and I think we, we've talked about some of those, but there's some other questions related to that. He asked questions about storm drainage and the stormwater pond, which I think I understand, but it would be more clear for, I think, the public if we had some of those answers published.
Now, did the neighborhood meeting minutes get published?
But I think, Tom, to Tom's point, is that something we can address? Somebody can quickly call up the questions and briefly have Savannah and Wendy perhaps address those, Tom? Would that...
Yeah, I think that would be easy to do in a generic...
To the extent that you can. I don't know that there's a requirement to absolutely address all those, but in the public meeting, you all would know, staff would know better, but maybe we can do that if we can call it up quickly.
So there's a couple of comments that you've had that I'd like to speak to if, if you're open to that. When we talked about the transition from the trailside to Drayly, I did want to mention that the trailside PUD includes some other product types that we intentionally removed from this particular parcel. So there was multifamily in trailside, and there was also single-family attached. And so Savannah had talked about providing a less dense transition, and so I just kind of wanted to mention that and share a little bit of that. I also want to, I'm trying to, trying to remember your comments. I wanted to speak to the lot sizes. By adding a smaller lot size, it does allow us to have product, two different product types that have two different price points. So it gives some of our buyers options by having the same larger lots could reduce the chance of certain folks of looking at those smaller lots for more affordability. So I just wanted to bring that up. And you also talked about the smaller lots. Some of them front to open space, other ones front to a public street, and so that's why you have the advanced architectural standards that create front porches and some more quality design that we've incorporated at trailside. So if you drive down trailside, you'll see some of those front facing to streets, and then there are others that face to open space. In talking about the neighborhood meeting, we were all in attendance and spoke to individuals. It was an open house presentation, so many of the slides that you see this evening, we had printed up in 24 by 36, and so we were able to answer those questions in person. And some of the other ones, we also responded to an email if they left an email. I'm trying to think quickly off the top of my head. There were some comments about trees, and when we show our concept plan, I did want to mention that that is illustrative. It's kind of our first stab at what we're hoping to do. Each of you will see our preliminary plat application where we'll have more detail, and you'll have additional time to respond as we fine-tune those details. So we want to just let you know that we'll be back before you again to answer more of those drainage questions. We do have a civil engineer on our team and is working through some of those details now, and we'll provide those in our normal process. So the concept sketch is the first one, and we kind of just throw down what we think is going to work and what we're running with. So you'll see us again, and we'll be able to answer more of those questions. I know there were some questions about trees. We've done an overlay of the trees and our site, so we're taking that into consideration. We also need to evaluate some of the quality of the trees. As you know, you want to make sure that those are safe in our amenities. We want to make sure that those that visit can be safe as well. So some of them will not be able to be saved, and we are looking at the others. And so that was one of the questions. The gentleman who had questions about... The gentleman who had questions about height, he was, I think, more worried about, I don't want to speak for him, but what I understood was we have a two-story. He was just worried maybe that they were the higher multifamily. And as I said, we're not having multifamily in this portion. He did ask about setbacks and those dimensions will be provided at our preliminary plat. Can you think of any others that I haven't covered? Okay.
Chad, are you able to-
Yeah, unfortunately, I do not have access to the network on this computer. So I'm not able to pull up that document that was presented in your packet here.
It's page 53 of 68, Observations of the Meeting. It was an observation report that I believe you and Kevin authored.
I like the idea of providing our responses. I think that makes perfect sense to me.
It makes sense.
Yes, sir.
That would be-
Yeah, so I'll make sure that we do that. I'll be working on the preliminary plat. So when our next neighborhood meeting takes place, oh dear, you'll have to make that bigger.
Tom, you're seeing it there. Did Wendy reasonably touch on those?
I have it here now, friends. Let's see.
Are you comfortable with, in the next phase?
Yes, I think so.
Need more information? Okay, let me just, one, I'm going to go back and I'm, by no means the expert. When your question, your issue on the stormwater, knowing that that situation is, as Savannah and or Wendy mentioned, is still somewhat fluid, if I might, are you comfortable with the fact that they've yet to have a complete resolution on that?
Right. It's a really flat property and I think stormwater is going to be an issue there. And the surrounding properties are also quite flat. So directionally, running it to the southeast corner makes sense. It's going to have to, you know, head south to the Pooter eventually. But I think that the 10-year assessment, that model is, is not very conservative, is probably the best way to put it.
Okay.
And I think a good civil engineer probably would want to see something a little more wider ranges. You probably are going to look at a few more inches of rainfall potentially falling with a more conservative model.
Well, I appreciate those, that input. I know for a fact we have a discussion with our engineer this Friday. And so I can get more details and share your comments with him. So right now, that's the best I can do, but we do have a grading discussion with our engineer for Draley on Friday.
Great.
Yeah.
Dawn, anything, fortunately, we do have an engineer, anything you would like to comment on about that water issue?
No, not really. You know, this is very preliminary. And so when we get to the preliminary side of this thing, we'll have the information from your engineer to evaluate it and we'll do that for sure.
Our plan is to submit to the town for our first application for our pre-app. I believe it's the 29th of June, so we're working quickly to have some of those answers. There are codes and standards that we must adhere to and we are willing and happy to do that. So the site works for all of us that are involved, Hartford and the town.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions?
The only other question I had might just be a design aesthetic, but normally you see entrances from major roadways on each side. And if you go back to that, the picture of it, I didn't see one coming off of Three Bell. I don't know, maybe that's just for the ability to put more houses along that roadway. But is that standard, I guess, when it comes to emergency vehicles being able to access that? Not getting it there from Three Bell?
Yeah, so the reason why there's no additional access from Three Bell is because it doesn't meet criteria for spacing. So the Saddlehorn intersection would be the only one that's allowable on Three Bell from that point. So since they do have technically two points of access.
And it's directly north of this project. That's where the roundabout is. So it will lead you right into that roundabout, directly into this parcel of a Three Bell.
And the railway doesn't interfere with that, you know, if there's a train there or anything?
Nope, that's north. Yeah, you're, we're quite away. We're about a half mile south.
Perfect.
Good question.
So just wanted to, the 3,000 square foot lots, those are the alley loads and the others are more the 5,000 range?
Go ahead. Yeah, the smaller alley-loaded lots will be roughly 3,800. They'll be closer to 4,000 square feet in size. And the larger lots will be roughly 6,000. They'll vary, but that's going to be the average.
Okay, and then the only other thing that hadn't been asked is the setback, you know, and the effect on the driveways. So 20-foot, that means anybody with a pickup is going to be parking essentially on the sidewalk, right?
It'll be close. The two feet will present a little bit closer to the sidewalk. But it is a, we, staff looked at it as an extension of the trailside, looking aesthetic. So that is one thing that if you have concerns on, you can obviously voice that concern. We felt the two feet wasn't going to make that much of a difference for this neighborhood on the small amount of lots that were there and with keeping in the same aesthetics as trailside to the north.
I think as it proceeds, it's certainly going to be a conflict, you know. allowable, yes, but maybe a conflict that, you know, HOA or something is going to have to resolve that. I know, like, when I'm out running, you know, I don't like it when people are blocking the sidewalk.
Right, and they do have some parking spaces for additional vehicles there.
Parking provided throughout the site that will certainly help alleviate that. And there, you know, there certainly will be, there's garages, you know, on each site as well. So the intent is to have, you know, alternatives to having cars parked, you know, on the sidewalk.
And from looking at the plans, it looks like the alleys are a little bit wider than some because there's, you know, it showed cars parked in the, basically, you know, between the alley and the garage.
There's two alley widths proposed, a 24 or 26 and I believe a 24. Both of those do have anticipated for the parallel parking in front of the garage as we've done with trailside to the north and actually Timneth Landings, one of theirs where they have the apron. So both of those will, the alley, both alleys would provide for that as well. Not on the alleys, no.
Alleys won't have sidewalks.
The alley, with the alley load, there's no front garage to those.
In response to that question about parking behind the garage, and you have to check me, I'm just doing this from memory, but we have a five-foot easement requirement, but we've extended our setback to eight feet to allow for that parking. So we're not asking people to park in a space that hasn't been provided for. So we've allowed a little bit more room behind those garages.
Yep, that is correct. There is, it's an eight-foot apron that is on the backside. So it's essentially a parallel parking space.
Which is providing for something that could happen. So at least we're, you know, we try to have the foresight, think of it and provide for it.
So you're talking a lot about this, how's the aesthetics of trailside, but it is not trailside? Or is it, or are you?
So that's a great question. The Draley name right now is coming from the owners of the farm. And so we're honoring that name and including that in our plat. In our marketing mind, it will be an extension of trailside. We're working on details on how those residents access the amenities, but it will appear to residents as if it is all one community. And so the intent is for residents to use parks. I believe the parks are public parks anyway due to the Metro District. I'd have to confirm that. But the intent is for it to appear to residents as seamless. The trails will continue. The amenities will be of the same quality standard that we see at trailside, I think residents will enjoy. And then, you know, it'll have a little bit different flair with the barn and we're working on those concepts now.
Okay, so you say it will have the amenities or they will be, the residents will be able to use the amenities?
Yes, yes, ma'am. That's the intent, for that, just for the residents to go back and forth. I don't think that they'll see a differentiation between those amenities. It's just, it's the name of the current owner and so we are in keeping it with that. Rendezvous is the previous plat, so this, I believe this plat will be named Draley, but we're working on those details. You'll see that before it comes in. We may, we may do some additional signage. There are other marketing things we can do to make it look seamless if there's a concern there. But our anticipation is that residents won't be able to tell a difference.
And then everything that is to the west, obviously, is to be determined. That's unincorporated, that's county, don't have any idea. It's not owned by the same family. That parcel is not, so it is-
Yes, ma'am, as I understand it.
Totally, and 100%.
It's not something that we're working on at this time.
Okay. I think all the rest of my questions were answered by everybody else.
Tom, another question. You had your mic still on.
I'm okay.
The trail, the Pooter Trail, where does that, reference to that, where will that pass through here?
It'll be, so right now, we have the interim location through the trailside development that runs along Three Bell. It'll continue going down Three Bell on the east side of the property or the west side of the Three Bell, Street of Three Bell. So it'll pick up at the south or the north property line and then continue down to River Pass.
Okay, and it continues south to eventually connect down to Windsor. The article in the Colorado was clear as mud, by the way.
Not much is happening. I'm watching.
I hear you. Commissioners, other questions, comments on this? Okay, we will, we will take each item separately. Kevin, correct. We vote on each of these separately. So I need a motion at this point on item 6A, a resolution for annexation for property known as the Draley, Draley to the town of Timneth. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes on a vote of 5-0. Item 6B, do I have a motion on zoning map amendment for the annexation of the property known as Draley? Motion, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That one is a, passes on a vote of 5-0. Item 6C, the Draley sketch plan, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Was that? Oh, okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. And item 6D, the Draley planned development overlay amendment, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries on a vote of 5-0 as well. Very good. I'd say welcome to Timneth, but you've already been here for quite a while, so you're welcome.
And thanks for your patience on our observations.
Reports, Commissioners, anything? I have one thing to mention. Anybody else? The Ice Cream Social was up to its usual fine standards for town events. I'm sorry, the weather looked like it wasn't going to cooperate, but it ended up working out okay. But it was, it was very, a very, very nice event.
It was great.
It sure was. I haven't seen that many people at anything before, so it was very nice. Commissioners, anything else? Anything from the town staff? Nothing? Nothing? Okay. Are we likely to have another meeting in two weeks? Two weeks, okay. And looking, looking out here, I know when Wendy came on board, we knew she was not going to be here on the 19th of July. Correct, Wendy, if we have a meeting? We don't know that far out because we don't know in two weeks from now, so, all right. Quite all right. Commissioners, staff, anything else for the good of the order?
Thank you for the book. I appreciate it.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.